Welcome, I'm Margie Gray and I am the Leadership Team Coordinator for the League of Women Voters. And I welcome all of you here tonight. Before our program begins, I want to tell you about another event coming in March 15th. I passed around some of these little posters. It'll be in the paper, it'll be on our website. But on March 15th at Sangre de Cristo, we're going to have a program on COVID. Are we really done? What comes next? And what did we learn? And Dr. Eric Tonner, who's the Senior Scholar and Scientist at the Center for Health and Security at the Bloomberg School of Public Health at Johns Hopkins University will be a speaker, as well as Andrea Harlston will be talking about Chaffey County issues. So that's something that you can look forward to coming, we'll have that at Sangre de Cristo on March 15th, the Ides of March, I guess. For all of you to know, all of our programs that we have that are open to the public, we try to record them. And Lindsay and Robert are helping here tonight to get us recorded. And so if you missed the program, you can always go to our website and find programs that have been recorded. So this is going to be recorded also. And I think that's all I have to say right now. Ms. Karen Dills has been the coordinator of this particular program. And so Karen, if you'd like to begin and introduce.
We can do that. I'm Karen Dills, the Membership Chair. Thanks for filling out your name tags. There are information and membership information on the little counter as you go out. If you're interested in joining the League, or you can find our website and go there and find out what we're all about there. And we are nonpartisan, we never take a position on candidates, we only take a position on issues that we have studied. So we are very fortunate because this was one of our favorite and obviously most popular meetings of the year to have our county commissioners. And we usually meet at noon, but it's usually during their workday and they requested evening. Plus Greg was on vacation. Or going. So P T Woods, Greg Felton, Keith Baker. And I'm gonna, I think, let you guys update us on a little bit of your areas of expertise. I think you still have certain areas. And then I have had some questions submitted. I sent a few others that people had submitted prior. And then we will take questions from the audience. And can we do questions via chat?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll do the ones live first and then you can see if we have any chat. You can be my chat man.
And if anybody does, please get under a microphone.
Say again.
If any of the audience wants to talk, please get under a microphone.
Okay. I bet they can hear me. Okay. All right, so we'll let the chair talk.
Okay, thank you Karen and the League for putting this event together. It's something we look forward to every year. And thank all of you for coming tonight to get to know a little bit more about the county and where we see the next year unfolding. This will be, this is our next to last time to do one of these events on an annual basis for Greg and me. P T's first of what will no doubt be quite a few. So thank you again for coming. The areas that I monitor most closely are the legislative front, where we interface with Colorado Counties Incorporated. Those of you who are familiar with your civic governments, there's the Colorado Municipal League, which you're a part of, the town of Buena Vista and the city of Salida and the town of Ponte Springs are parts of that. And they're kind of our collective advocacy group. There's another group that we're contemplating joining called Colorado Commissioners and Counties Acting Together, CCAT. And they're a little bit more concentrated in the mountain communities and more recreation-oriented economies and what have you. And we're contemplating joining that group too. But their mission in life is to help us lobby and advocate for policies and things that we think are necessary and think that we would benefit from as a community, as a county. My other large portfolio is transportation. And that is writ large, it's roads, it's bridges, it's the topic of the railway, the possible reactivation of that. And it's grown to include broadband over the past few years because broadband is a transportation system. It's transporting information, ones and zeros, and light waves on fiber optic cable, but it's transporting things nonetheless. And it can have some tremendous impacts on greenhouse gas reduction, vehicle miles traveled reduction, and lots of other things if it's used wisely. I worked the Public Lands Beat, which is a county with 80% public lands. That's something that we need to be keenly aware of and engaged with at all times. And there's several things that we've accomplished on improving our relationships with our land management agencies over the past few years. And those have borne great fruit. And you know, other communities around the West have gotten keen to the fact that if you nurture good relationships with your land management agencies, good things happen. And so that's one of the things that I work on. I work with the Upper Arkansas Workforce Development Board to try to help with job training, vocational training, and things that we can do to help our economic development team and business community tailor our workforce and take advantage of educational opportunities and training opportunities so that we do have a more vibrant workforce. And that's pretty much it on my portfolios. And we'll continue on after everyone else is finished. Greg?
Yeah, Greg Felton, obviously county commissioner. And I think the first thing I'd like to say is, in terms of kind of gratitude to this group, but also to everybody who's here.
Yeah, talk up Greg. Give him a safety talk buddy.
All right, let me take off my shirt.
Command voice.
I'm Greg Felton, I'm county commissioner, and I tend to speak softly. What I wanted to say is that, you know, what we see here tonight, this level of participation and engagement is very, very much reflective of what we see every day working for this community. Whether it's yesterday at the Buena Vista Community Coffee that goes on in this same room that Chamber puts on, or looking back several years ago to the whole Envision Chaffey County process, where 1,500 of you participated on some level in that visioning process and then development of action plans to implement the visions. Our human population is our greatest natural resource in a community that is known for its natural resources. So I just thank you for coming out and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this community. There's a lot of county commissioners that I know in higher office, former commissioners. And I can tell you to a person, they look back on their days in this job as the best, just being able to operate at the community level. When we talk about sort of issues or things that we're particularly concerned with, as Keith mentioned, he and I are term limited. We've got 22 months left. And so a big thing for me honestly is trying to shore up the foundation under the many great initiatives that we have been able to accomplish in spite of COVID and wildfire and things like that distracting us at times. And so many of that's kind of suite of initiatives that came out of Envision Chaffey County are really important to me. Our work on forest health and wildfire mitigation, our work on managing outdoor recreation impacts, our work on trying to strengthen the agricultural economy and support our producers, those are really important to me and I don't want that lost in the shuffle, so to speak. The work that Chaffey Common Ground, our quarter percent sales tax, has been able to put forward and support is just remarkable. And I get to speak about it around the state because we really are a model. Everybody knows who Chaffey County is now, and it's for good reasons too. So very proud of that. And then, you know, as Keith said, our friend here hopefully has eight years of this ahead of him. And that's the other. I'm hoping. But that's the other part of shoring up the foundation, I think, is getting P T really ready to help then bring in two more new commissioners in two years and maintain as much continuity as possible and, you know, just keep this positive trajectory underway. So I'll leave it at that.
P T Wood, I'm your newest county commissioner. And first of all, yeah, thanks for the trust and the opportunity. And I hope by the time I'm at the end of my tenure, you guys will have thought you made a good decision by appointing me to this position. I'm, well, I guess my main area of focus is probably economic development right now. But that kind of ties into everything and it's, it affects everything. So there is transportation, there's broadband, there's our public lands, there's the railroad, there's our local businesses, there's our schools, all those things tie into economic development. So I'm a little bit of a jack of all trades, I would say. And I am trying to learn what the other commissioners do as well as I can because, yeah, as they said, in two years, it's going to be me and two new folks. And somebody's going to need to be sitting up here that has an idea of what's going on, what's been going on. And as you guys know, Bob Christiansen, our administrator, retired on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday? So we have this big void right now in that position that we're going to have to bring somebody in and get them up to speed. So there's a, there's a lot of learning going on at this point right now, at least for myself.
Okay. Anything else before I start? Questions?
Yeah. I have some initiatives or priorities in my year as chairman because I'm committed to serving one year and no more, and then passing it along to Commissioner Wood so that he has a year to serve as chairman with Greg and me both still being around so we can advise him and tutor him, not that he will need that much because he had an outstanding several years as mayor of Salida and he served as the chair of their planning commission for eight years, right? So he's got, he's got a lot of experience under his belt there to go to bat with things. But kind of like Greg said, that he didn't want to lose things that we have built on these past few years, that's kind of where I am now. And then there are certain things that we still need to accomplish to make sure that we're leaving a good foundation for those who follow and to set the county up for even better, longer-term success. There's some things that we're very proud of accomplishing. Perhaps we didn't get them done as fast as we had hoped, but COVID had a lot to do with that, then there were some other factors that contributed to that. But we did update the comprehensive plan. We got the land use code update underway. That is progressing along well. It should be done by the end of the summer, early fall, worst case. We're working on a sustainable development plan, which will make sure that the county can continue to grow and do so in such a way that our environment is protected and that it accomplishes the goals of the comp plan and the land use code. It's more a way of thinking and it's a more a system of collaboration and coordination rather than it is a bunch of discrete tasks that need to be lined out. We've updated our emergency operations plan. We have an outstanding emergency services director, Rich Atkins, who's doing a very good job on all those sorts of things. And one of the biggest things that I think that came out of Envision was a display of our commitment to actually doing the things that were identified during the process. Because, and there are some people in this room who said it, and you know who you are, they were reluctant to engage in Envision because they had been through similar processes before and nothing had ever really happened afterward. Came up with lists of things to do, they just died on the vine, the plan went on shelf, you've heard it all. But we did deliver, you delivered, the community delivered on things like Chaffey Common Ground, the Community Foundation, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which we just had a review and an update on. So we're getting habituated to what planning is really about and how to make planning work for us rather than it be just a necessary evil or a total pain. One of the things that's made that happen, and P T mentioned Bob, who we're going to miss sorely, is that Bob really took it to heart when I spoke with him early on and said, "I really want to see us as a community do a much better job of inter-agency coordination and collaboration." It was something that Joel Benson had a lot to do with, Philip Puckett, Duff, everybody who's been a trustee in the town of Buena Vista over the past, I'd go back to 12 or 15 years, had a great deal to do with. And as a county, we're doing a very good job of that now, but it isn't written down and memorialized anywhere for anybody who's just getting involved in this line of work in whatever capacity. If they're starting out on the BV rec board, if they're starting out on a Salida board or one of our county volunteer boards. How does this work? How do you make it all fit together? How do you keep your portfolios coordinated without stepping on each other's toes, without drifting into somebody's lane and creating a mess? I use a little visual aid of a, of a commercial dishwasher silverware caddy. And it's got everything organized, the caddies are there, everybody knows where the knives and the forks and everything go, but there's holes in the silverware caddy so that the water can flow in and out. That's the problem with silos in a bureaucratic organization is sometimes they inhibit the free flow of information. So that's really one of the things that I think we've done a good job of, is having a free flow of information and good inter-agency collaboration and coordination. And we don't want to lose that and leave that behind. So my focus for my year is working on organizational efficiency and effectiveness and making sure that we have the organization in place to carry forward with the groundwork and everything that we've laid over these past several years and position P T and whoever follows Greg and me and the community for long-term success.
Okay. We have some questions that are specific, some that are not. They're more general. So I'm just going to start and then, I didn't write down the ones I already sent you, so you can answer them. Okay. Can Chaffey County Department of Human Services subcontract for agencies that are outside the county, Lake County, Fremont County, I don't know, Montezuma County, wherever, for services like long-term care Medicaid? There might be other services. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're asking, yes.
Okay. So the question is, can we subcontract to other agencies?
Well, of course, we're always going to ask for legal opinion from our attorneys and stuff. But I would say yes, because we already do. And the example that we, that comes front of mind is with Solvista Health for a lot of our behavioral health services and things that they do. They're a multi-county group and that's kind of the way the entire state is structured for behavioral health and emotional well-being services. There are different ones in different areas, but for our, I guess it's our five-county region, you know, the usuals, Custer, Fremont, Chaffey, Lake, and I don't think Park is in, well, maybe Park is in Solvista's footprint. I don't really remember. But we can do that.
So we subcontract to them for them to provide services?
Yes.
Can Lake County, Custer County subcontract with any of our Department of Human Services agencies to take care of things that they cannot take care of?
I don't know about human services, but there are things that are done that way. Like weed control, our weed control officer, Kayla Malone, subs out work with Sawatch County and some others. She provides services to them on a fee basis, of course. And there's a good bit of that goes on with some of the smaller counties. I don't know if you have anything to add, Greg or P T?
Well, you know, one of the toughest things we deal with in human services is child welfare.
Speak up.
One of the toughest things we deal with in human services is child welfare. And there are times unfortunately when we have to remove children from the home. And our number one, you know, go-to solution for those situations is what we call kinship placement. So we're putting children with people they know, maybe family, maybe friends, but we're doing that and hopefully we're doing it locally. But we don't have foster care capacity in the county. And we also have situations where we have to put kids in more of a, I hate to use the word institutional because it's not like a, you know, horrible situation at all, but sometimes kids need to go in more of that kind of a environment. And in those instances and in foster care, we are, we are moving kids into other counties frequently. And sometimes it's quite a distance, Grand Junction, Durango, wherever we can place them. So when I think about that and just turn it around, Karen, if we had capacity to take care of kids from Lake and they didn't, I think that it would be a, there would be reciprocity. That's, there's a lot of shifting of resources throughout the human services system, especially on the funding side. But, you know, Keith's right, there is a legal quest element embedded in this question that I don't know the answer to when it comes to the entitlement type programs in Medicaid. I'm not really sure.
That's, that's important to be able to say, "I don't know," but I will find out. And I will send you this question by email and you can talk to the attorneys, et cetera. Okay. This is from Sheila Roberts, who's lived here for 42 years. And you all attended the meeting at Mount Princeton regarding geothermal recently. And she would like to know what your thoughts are on this matter of geothermal in the valley.
Take a slide at that.
Yeah, sure, why not? I'm a new guy, you can't get rid of me for like four years.
There's a recall process.
I don't know, what do you guys know about geothermal? So there's a, there's a few things, I think. It's a, it's an interesting idea and it is potentially a very useful way to backfill our grid so we have a more reliable energy system and are not relying on energy coming into the valley from outside of the valley. It would be a good, consistent green source of energy. There are some potential issues and these are the questions that we're hoping are answered through some of the studies that are probably going to be worked on with, with the federal money that's now available for this type of program. What effect would that have on that large pool of hot water, on our hot springs, on our groundwater supply? Those are really critical questions, it can affect them. I think the other big concern is, are we going to have a noisy plant out in the middle of this field that's generating a ton of steam and obscuring our view of the mountains and those sorts of things? I think new geothermal is much better designed to not cause those kinds of problems. There are also some other ancillary benefits with that hot water. It's still hot once you've, once you've built your, done your electric stuff, so what do you do with it? And there's the possibility, say, piping it over to the prison and reducing their, their electric costs, using it to heat, heat those guys up, piping it into BV, using that in some useful manner here. So there's some great opportunities, there's some big questions that need to be answered around it.
Can I just ask one more question? Isn't it proposed, where you're talking about the lead is, about south of the Kelly and also the Trout Ranch down there off of County Road 321?
Yeah, the question is, where's the location that they're talking about? And it is in that, in that Kelly Ranch area, kind of.
In the Trout Ranch.
Yeah, in that area.
Stand up, Suzie. Kelly Ranch. But anyhow, I went to a geothermal thing up at Mount Princeton about 15 years ago as a Sangre Board Member. And at that time, they took us out and showed us where they want to drill and it's down, you know, Wad Lane out there, it's out there and then a little bit to the north, I think it's state land.
Yeah, it is on state land. And there, that's kind of the preferred site. There were a number of other sites, until they actually drill a well and prove the hot water, then they can't, where it's going to be is a little bit of wild speculation.
There's a lot of residents that live right there and are very concerned about the noise, our wells. I mean, are they, are you guys going to care?
Those are the big questions that we will need to be answered before.
There's a huge issue up there. I mean, you're talking hundreds of houses that live out there. I mean, even like the great families not happy about this. We'd like some answers to that question because nothing's been reported and all of a sudden we find out about this.
Yeah, well, there's been.
It's a public meeting.
Yeah. It's, it is, it's very, very early stage. And like I said, those are incredibly important questions that I think the community needs to be answered before we charge ahead with this.
Thank you. This is on the geothermal. Two questions, who is they? And the second question is, what is the actual next step in the process?
Can we go with that?
Sure.
There's a, a small group of people have been studying this for a long time. They're geologists and others. Colorado School of Mines has been involved. They've done some preliminary studies, but as P T was saying, until the resource is proven and until there's a test drill drilled and some actual exploration done, all they've got is speculation. The source has been localized to a more refined area than where it was originally thought to be. A long time ago, I think a lot of people thought it was right with where the hot springs are. And a lot of people up at Frontier Ranch were concerned that it was somewhere up in there, but it is in fact down in Maxwell Park, somewhere a little bit lower. There are tools and there have been advancements made just in the last 15 or so years with things like directional drilling, taking advantage of natural flow because it is hot water, once you tap into it and vent it, it's going to do what hot water likes to do, which is come to the top. And then as it cools off, it can be reinjected. So you wouldn't have as much need for pumps and a lot of loud noise making. Perhaps the visual signature wouldn't be as great as it would be, the physical footprint wouldn't be as great as it would have been 15 years ago. I don't know. Those are things that definitely need to be studied. I know that, I think it's not unsafe to say that Sangre de Cristo is interested in it. And because of the financing that's available now from the Inflation Reduction Act and ARPA and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and all these other programs, it's advantageous to explore those opportunities now. Then there are lots of other strategic thinking opportunities like more distributed power generation, having a local source we can rely on that doesn't come from, you know, Pueblo or wherever the generating plant is, hundreds of miles away perhaps, having something that we can rely on. A lot of things that have been done in some of the Nordic countries and Iceland and stuff, they call them power generation districts or like micro grids. And so there's some, lots of opportunities there. I understand the concerns that people have, I would have them too, and I do have them. And it would have to go through probably a minimum our 1041 process, but it's something that we would be able to, to examine. I need to talk louder or what?
No, I just wanted to mention that our League of Women Voters worked with the county commissioners several years ago and we now have in place a very extensive well-fought 1041 permitting process that we did not have previously. And I think that should provide some good guidance as we go through this process and also be a comfort to the residents of our county.
But it will undergo some thorough scrutiny, but it's not just going to get waved through and green-lighted or anything, no matter how great it looks.
Great. All right, next question is.
So we did have a comment.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Chris Martin wrote out here, "We need a relatively shallow well and maybe 2,500 feet for two to three million, relatively cheap, two to three million. If that proves positive, then more expensive, deeper test wells are needed."
And I think now it's five million, is what we read at the meeting, so.
Be six next week.
Thank you. Keep me on that.
Yeah, thanks Keith.
There was a question, what to do to. Uh, there was a question, what to do to clean up properties full of old cars, appliances, junk and trash?
You guys talking about me?
Okay.
I think you're eating more junk.
One man's junk is another man's treasure, right?
Okay, so along with this, to differentiate, if there are cars on a piece of private property that have been there for a long time and never moved, do they need to be licensed? Any vehicle?
Sitting there?
Nope.
No, no. You just couldn't operate it on a road.
So there's nothing the county can do about junk yards?
Well, that's not true. I mean, we, we've looked into nuisance statutes or ordinances, um, and that, that covers a broad spectrum of things, right? From junk and, and those types of things to barking dogs. You may remember a while back, we had talked a lot about barking dogs one, one year on this occasion. Um, and it's a challenge because you are either tasking law enforcement with enforcement or you're going to more of a code enforcement officer type model, um, that's maybe working through the development office, planning, that kind of thing. And we're kind of, I feel like we're sort of on the cusp of maybe moving into, uh, a position that is more tasked with that kind of code enforcement type stuff, but we're not, we're not there at this time. But that would, that would probably be a big part of the answer. And, um, our, our sheriff, uh, has plenty on his plate. He really, he's, he pushes back, you know, when we, we try to task him with too many sort of more civil matters. And so, not to speak for him, but that's sort of been the discussion in the past. And so I think it's, it will be, uh, something that we're going to have to handle on a case by case basis. We do, um, when we have serious issues of, uh, you know, just debris and garbage piling up, we had a case up on Poncha Pass, um, we have, uh, sent letters of enforcement, we can get a court order, uh, we can remove the stuff and put a lien on the property. We had an issue with a house that cut, basically was collapsing down a hill in the, uh, kind of on the Methodist front there, south of Highway 50. We ended up, you know, doing something similar to condemnation on that. Um, so we do have tools, but it takes a lot of energy and capacity to, to, uh, implement those and it's, just doesn't always rise to the top. There's a lot on our plate right now. So that's available for the real blatant, you know, true safety hazards, but when it comes to just kind of the unsightly stuff and, and again, you know, we, you know, we've got, uh, people in agriculture, for example, who you drive by, somebody from Denver drives by and they say, wow, what a mess. And it's like, no, those are my, that's my parts yard, you know? Um, I use that stuff. So, you know, it's like everything else. We, we gotta navigate it and try to find that middle ground and, and be as reasonable as possible.
Go ahead.
Before, I think I saw some people with some follow-up on this, but before we get into that, this is the kind of thing I'm talking about, about an organization that can adapt and improvise and, and address some of these issues that weren't really issues years ago. When your nearest neighbor was two miles away, there were certain things that didn't bother you as much as they do now. And I've heard people say, I don't care what my neighbor does, as long as it doesn't hurt my property values. Um, that's kind of the world we're in now, that people are moving in closer to each other and that's the way our codes and zoning are written, so there's not a whole lot you can do to keep your nearest neighbor two miles away. People have said, Chape County is a transitioning county and we are in transition. All counties are in some level of transition all the time. What I characterize us at this unique stage in our history is an emerging county because we are growing and we're dealing with some issues and we're coming up with new ways to address some, we're playing catch up with others. Uh, it was 20 years between comp plan updates, for example. So we're having to catch up with some of those things. This is that type of thing. This is one of those next step types of things in our emergence or in our maturity process as a county, is how do we deal with it? I know that a lot of things are complaint driven. We'd like to be a little bit more proactive with those things so that before somebody calls, we take, uh, take charge and, and prevent it from becoming a problem and from becoming a neighbor dispute. I know there's some long festering neighbor disputes on the board right now, on the plane board, not this board, but, uh, that are out there right now that perhaps we could deal with. And that's, uh, you know, an opportunity for our growth in that regard. We did take advantage of some opportunities and some creative thinking to eventually take care of the Sleeping Indian Mobile Home Park situation up the road here. Uh, it's not a hundred percent cured, but it's on the track to, uh, to be something that it wasn't just a few short years ago.
Okay, and that morphs into, a little bit into another two-part question here, because that land is in the county. Um, I believe it's owned by a private individual or company or whatever, um, not the county.
Which land?
Sleeping Indian.
Okay.
Sleeping Indian. Uh, currently, does, does the county, two questions. Does the county have to require developers to prove that they have water on any big development? I mean, that's a big development, the one on 285 by Dorothy Hill, north of Rocky Mountain Outdoor Center in Nathrop, on the west, east side of the road that has just closed to a developer. Do those developers have to prove there's water for all the homes that they put on there? Water guy.
You want me to start on that?
Yeah, it says right here, Greg, water. Water, Greg.
Well, so it's both in statute and our land use code that we have to, uh, we require proof of legal water. And that legal is an important word in that because, uh, when you're in an over appropriated basin like the Arkansas River Basin where we all live, um, there really isn't just any water that's sort of legally available to appropriate that you can rely on. You might be in priority once in a while when the river's at peak flow, but most of the time you're not. So that's why everybody pretty much who's drilling wells in these properties that you listed, uh, and the many others we deal with, have to augment their wells so that they do indeed have the legal ability to, to put a well in and, and use that water. The physical, uh, availability of water is something that I think for us has become a bit more of a concern. And we know we have places in the county, particularly, you know, back up here in the hills to the east of the river, where the geology and the hydrology are such that it's a real crap shoot when you go to drill a well up there, whether you're going to hit any water. Um, and then we have places that are, you know, well-fed by, um, runoff off the mountain front and groundwater recharge that way and stream flow and irrigation diversions and everything, that there's a lot of groundwater available for, um, for wells and that, for an actual physical supply. One of the things that we're, um, engaged on right now, uh, the county working with Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District and the US Geological Survey is to commission a, kind of a longitudinal study using a geographically dispersed set of, um, monitoring wells to do a much more detailed, more granular, uh, groundwater availability study that would also look at, where did that water come from? Is this water that's recharging at a rate that can sustain a lot more growth? Or are we basically mining ice age water that doesn't recharge at all, like the Ogallala Aquifer type situation? And so I'm really, I'm kind of thrilled, honestly, um, that we've been able to put this together. Um, Beth Helmke is here in the audience, our deputy administrator, has done a lot of work on this and really commander, we are, we've got some funding within the county. USGS is coming with funding, Upper Ark's coming with funding, and we're reaching out to the Colorado Water Conservation Board right now for significant funding. This is probably a $700,000 project over the next three or four years. But the idea here is to really zero in because it doesn't make sense that you would have a uniform minimum lot size over a topography as diverse as this county, right? I think anybody can understand that. Yeah, a two acre lot, you, there's a good chance you won't find water up in that high dry country to the east. A two acre lot may be just fine if you're being recharged from Chalk Creek or Browns Creek or something like that. And so this is a, a validated way to look at density of wells and what amount of use is allowed, what amount of historic or consumptive use is allowed on these wells. And so it's a two-part answer because there's legal availability and there's physical availability and they're both important. And we're trying to really, um, leave our successors with better information to use in land use planning that ties back to the availability of groundwater for wells.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, Suzie.
So on, I'll use that same plot of land. If you're driving between BV and, um, Salida, you'll see that big area I'm talking about, um, south of Rocky Mountain Outdoor Center that's been under contract for two years.
Rainbow Rock?
Yeah, by Rainbow Rock, Dorothy Hill, yeah. So it's sold. Is there any requirement of a developer of such vacant land to provide any kind of affordable housing, rental housing, as it stands now in the Canning County or through the Planning Commission? I, I don't know.
Do you want to take a shot? It's up to you.
Uh, yeah, there, we, we don't have any sort of inclusionary housing ordinance in the county. Um, municipalities do have that. We're looking at a few things. I think the transferable development rights are an option that we're looking at for the new land use code that could be a really useful tool for the county, which is, you know, frankly, it's going to be really hard to do affordable housing in the county. Um, you can't do the density, you don't have access to the, uh, to the utilities, all those things that you really need to have to effectively build affordable housing. That is much more of a municipal function, I would say. But there are ways that the county can work with the municipalities to help them achieve all of our affordable housing goals. And so we are looking at some of those through the land use code.
Okay. Do we have anything in the chat, Robert?
No.
Okay. Do you remember anything I sent you last night? Whatever. I think I got it. We all got it all covered. Anybody have questions from the audience? Reed?
Um, the feds have thrown out a lot of money, but a lot of legislation has been passed. One of the things that I've heard is that the big cities, they've already got the staffs on hand to go after that money. We don't have that capability here, so kind of enlighten us on how you guys are working to get federal funds to do the things that we need here.
Okay, I'll take a swing at that one. Uh, a couple of years ago, when this all started, this flow of funding and these various programs began, um, I advocated then for hiring somebody to navigate that and to be the person who would work this problem, work this challenge on behalf of the county. And the beauty of it is you can use those funds to pay for this person. Uh, they could either be on a consultant basis or we could bring them in with some idea of making it a permanent position later on, be a grant writer, uh, project manager, similar to the way the town, uh, had rehired former Mayor Benson. And I know several counties and municipalities did that, especially the municipalities and counties that, um, when the CARES Act, the first one that came out, anything above 500,000 in population got their money direct. It didn't come via the state where some friction took money away from it and you had to apply for grants and everything. But, you know, that's water under the bridge now, but, uh, I think we are seriously considering that again, this time. Uh, fortunately, that money hasn't expired yet, so we're not, you know, too far behind the problem. But I think we appreciate the enormity of the opportunity and the need for having somebody to do that. Uh, second thing is the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments just hired someone under a state program, uh, a few weeks ago to be a grant writer and to help local governments within our Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments, uh, footprint, uh, once again, the same types of counties I mentioned with Soul Vista, uh, to help us with that, to help us navigate those opportunities and write grants and know, and you have to think creatively about these things. I know that, uh, some of us with the town, uh, talked about it before. You know, there are times that solving a water problem or solving a broadband problem may look like solving a water problem because it is. For example, the town of BV's water treatment plant is out west of town, uh, to take advantage of new automation and new monitoring systems and everything, perhaps more broad, uh, more robust broadband cable out to that area, uh, is warranted or necessary. So you could fund that enhanced broadband capacity out there to support the water treatment facility, uh, with some of that water money. We've got some issues, uh, down on the south end, around County Road 107 and some of those areas there with drainage and access and just, uh, a growth of traffic and everything, that there's probably some stormwater runoff funding available there that we could have a holistic approach to fixing that. Right now, we're just putting Band-Aids on it whenever we have an opportunity or a necessity to do that. We could really fix it if we had somebody to really dive deeply into these various stovepipes of funding and put a package together, put a project together to manage that.
Alan?
Uh, I think I'd direct this to Mr. Baker, but, um, given the importance of recreation to the county, open space issues and trails, that sort of thing, what, what do you think about the future possibility of developing a, a program within the county structure, that's a division or a department even, outdoor recreation trails and federal relationships like that?
That's an excellent question and I think it's a great idea. Um, I think that's one of the things about adaptive organizational, uh, progress. Uh, as you may have guessed, we've been going through an interview process to, uh, to find Mr. Christensen's successor. And one of the things that's been pointed out several times is the county on our org chart has 18 departments. That's a lot of departments. And some of them are just one person. Some of them are a couple of people, but some of them are pretty small and it becomes a management challenge, uh, the, the broader and flatter your org chart goes. An ideal span of control is normally one person supervising six people who supervise six people in turn and so forth, uh, for efficiency and effectiveness. So I think as things grow, a track we should be on, and I've shared this with, uh, my prior colleagues and my current colleagues, is that we need to put ourselves on a track that could lead, doesn't necessarily must lead, but could lead to a public works department. And under public work, you would house things like road and bridges, like the landfill, like environmental services we control. And I think that would be a logical place for, uh, a model I was looking at recently was, um, recreation, open space and historical preservation. So that would be a place to house our heritage area advisory board activities, uh, within the county too. So those are some, you know, ideas that I think need to be considered.
Can I, Karen?
Yeah.
Can I chime in? I, I want to sort of jump back to Reed's question a little bit if I could. Um, and, and that is that, this is a, as they say, right, this is a once in a lifetime kind of situation. Um, and there's money sloshing everywhere. And I think for some people, it's all very concerning frankly, because it does come with a cost. But I, I think that part of our job here is not just to grab everything we can, uh, but also to think about sort of how sustainable is that? You get, you know, you, you build the thing, but then do you have the funding to maintain it? Do you have the staffing? When, when we came on, uh, six years ago, you know, the board before us didn't When, when we came on six years ago, you know, the board before us didn't have the same enjoyment we've had of getting to initiate a lot of neat stuff and, and shell out a lot of money to different causes. They were, they got us through the recession, and they did it in a way that was extremely humane and working with attrition as opposed to having to let people go. But it was a very, very challenging time. And it's important for us to remember that, I think, because it's bound to happen again. Our, our staff at the county has grown significantly, and there's a part of me that's embarrassed to say that and a part of me that's proud of it, because there's elements of both to that that we have to own. But, you know, we've grown from about 225 staff to probably somewhere between 275 and 300. And so, and it's been warranted, and we're catching up on that long time where they just tried to keep the, the books in the black. But we do need to be kind of circumspect about, you know, going after every shiny object that goes by, because there's long-term carrying costs to that, and we don't want to get overextended. So I think, to answer your question, Reed, I think in a way, we're not perfect, and, and we have our own capacities, too, but I think there's been a pretty good balance of going for the things that we feel like we can handle, and then sometimes we have to pull back a little bit, especially in this environment. Yeah, there's a lot of money, but have you seen the costs of doing things? We, we had a building we were going to add on the east side of our main building. When we started, it was estimated to cost $4 million. The last estimate we had was, I think, 16 million, and that was like, you know, today, sign now, and we opted to back away from that whole deal. So it's, it's another one of these balancing acts that comes with this job. It's kind of the, the cool element of it in a way, that living on the edge sometimes, but it, you know, we, we got to be prudent, too, and make sure that we're, we're doing the right things for the long haul.
We have a important question from the chat. Soul Vista was providing mental services, mental health services to both BV and Solida school districts, but apparently they're only in Solida now. So what leverage do the commissioners have to remedy that situation since we are paying the bill for their services? But I would guess the school districts were paying them to supply some of that, too, but...
Yeah, that relationship's between the school districts and Soul Vista. Key word there is leverage, and I'd say, in a strict definition of leverage and a legal definition or everything it implies, very little, because the school district is a, you know, they're a self-governing body, they have elected school board members. We can exercise advisory capacity, we can encourage, we can try to facilitate communication, we can do all those things that fall under the, the broad term of good offices, but there's very little that we can directly do. I've had a couple of questions recently about some other topics and say, well, look at the, look at the org chart within the county, that's an elected official's office, this is an elected official's office. And so, you know, when you're talking about various groups that are governed by statute and have their own elected governing bodies and everything, it's, it does severely restrict what you can do.
I think, you know, and not specifically to the Soul Vista and the school stuff, but one thing that I think was a little eye-opening for me as a new commissioner is really the, the guardrails that the state puts on us and what we can put our fingers into and what we can't. And it is, that is all dictated in Denver, and they're, they're hard guardrails. You can't step outside of them. So sometimes there are things that, you know, we want to do and we simply can't.
An interesting example that goes back to the question, you know, is we've made available, you know, there's things that we can do, right, that are in our wheelhouse. Department of Human Services is in our wheelhouse. We've made available to both school districts the opportunity to have a DHS liaison in the district, working with the kids, helping provide continuity over vacations, over summertime. And, you know, each school district, that is part of the genius of America, right, that school districts are local government and they have local control, and they're free to kind of characterize education the way they want to. That gets weird sometimes, but it also can be very responsive. And in this instance, Solida School District embraced that DHS offer, and it's been working very well for them. That offer's always still available for Buna Vista if they decide that they get to a place where they want to take that on, but it's also their option to, to not do so. And I think the same thing for Soul Vista. I think Soul Vista is available to Buna Vista schools, but each school district has their opportunities and, you know, considers their own philosophy, how they approach it. And yeah, talk about lanes, we have to respect that, but we do everything we can to provide all the options that are in our wheelhouse so that they can truly make local choices and they're not limited by our decisions or our work.
Greg, could you clarify, what is DHS?
Sorry, Department of Human Services. So child welfare, family youth initiatives, you know, there's kind of a spectrum from sort of inspirational type help to, you know, really kind of clinical, you could say, type help. And having a liaison in the school is, I think, proven to be a pretty good way to navigate that spectrum of challenges that kids can have.
Jim?
Yeah, I, let's go back to the rubbish. The one main stretch was one of my days I saw during my tenure sitting in y'all's position. And it was really kind of bad because what we were dealing with, we didn't expect to lose in court, because we had already made our decision, but we lost in court. And basically, what Ken Baker brought up to us at the time he was county attorney is that the only way we could get around it as, as the board commissioners was to go to home rule. And we didn't want to take that jump. And I think some of the home rule regulations have changed in here. Have y'all thought about home rule? If you're going to the home rule situation? I was not in favor of it.
Yeah, I, I haven't really spent much time thinking about that.
I think about it whenever I hear a county say, we're a home rule county and therefore we can do this, or we don't have to, we're not as restrained as a statutory county is. But as a realistic thing on the task list, you know, that's a huge task, and we've got a lot of these other smaller things that we're dealing with right now, and I think it's, it's probably something that needs a very good analytical examination in a few years, but right now, there's not a great sense of urgency on my part to try to do.
No, and I, and I would, I would say that typically, home rule movements are citizen-driven and not commissioner-driven. That would not be, that would not be a torch I would pick up. If this majority of citizens in the county came to me and told, told me that that's what they wanted, I would be behind it, but...
Well, I, I'm, I'm sitting in the same position, even 30 years later.
Yep.
But the deal is, that's what we were told with the trash situation.
Yeah, it does bring certain things, but you have to craft, to talk about how big a job it is, because the town of BV was looking at it years ago. You know, you have to craft a charter, you pretty much have to write all the rules, all the regulations and have everything there before you even enter into the question. And so it's a huge undertaking.
Cheryl, you had a question? Can Heather?
Um, I think commissioners know that there's a group that's been meeting, trying to look at some senior housing facility, possibly assisted living with some sort of memory care mixed in, and that we do have support from the hospital, and we have a couple of operators, Casio and Urban, sort of interested. And I'm just wondering what kind of interest or, and support there might be on the part of the county?
So I've been sitting in on those meetings. And I think I talked actually a lot about this during my campaign. We're a, we're an aging population. I think I didn't have a single gray hair a year ago. And now I wake up in the morning and I think a lot about this kind of stuff, because I feel that train of coming. But we want, you know, people have made their lives here. They live here, this is where they want to be, and it, it breaks my heart when someone has to leave the valley to get that end-to-life care. It is, you know, to leave where you've lived, your home, the place you love, your friends, your family, and go somewhere else to get that care is just not fair, and that's not the way it should be. We need to figure out a way to make sure that we can get that whole spectrum of end-to-life care from just needing a little bit of help to hospice care at the very end and help people stay, if not in their homes, at least in their communities throughout their life. So that's my, I don't know the solution, but it is something I'm passionate about.
Yeah. We've had a couple of false starts on continuum of care facilities. You know, when, those of you who remember the Meadows Project here in BV, that was one of the features it was going to have, was a graduated assisted living facility where you start out in a patio home and you make your way through to hospice stage, I guess, at some point. But yeah, there's, there's huge interest in it, Cheryl, and everyone else here. And like BT's just saying, it's something that is, every day goes by, you become increasingly aware of the need for it. Yeah.
Heather?
Can I add to that one?
Yeah, yeah, great.
Sorry, I want to follow that one, too, because, you know, this is another one of these issues, though, that it, it's, it's simple to talk about it in terms of how you feel, but it is incredibly expensive. And I, I worked on the Cassia proposal, and what we were going to, what they were proposing was a lot of the real entry-level assisted living kind of stuff, where there's somebody available to kind of check on you, but you're mostly on your own. It was so, it felt like to me like something that could be accomplished in a number of different ways versus the hardcore memory care or the true sort of convalescent care like we have at Columbine, Columbine Manor. And when you looked at the number of beds and how much they were asking of the county as contribution, it, it was a hard thing to justify, and I went back to them and said, let's pull, pull all that assisted living, pull all the kind of transitional stuff out, like, let's focus in on the, the really hardcore need that someone, a spouse can't provide or family can't provide. And they never really came back with the new, what do you call it, pro forma or, you know, the new proposal. And it, it kind of said to me that, you know, this is a business we're talking about. And I just had a, I had a hard time with what was proposed. I'm not at all against continuing to try to solve this, but again, it's another one of these things where it's like, okay, you know, we contribute five or $7 million and take care of some need where we have a whole bunch of people who are in desperate need every day, who are also raising children and, you know, that whole side of the equation, too, and just, we don't have $5 or $7 million in the first place. So trying to balance this stuff, you know, we really, I think a collaborative approach, you know, with the hospital and other players is really important, but it, it's got a pencil. It, it's the same, we're having the same problem that the individuals who need the care are having. It's like, how the heck do you pay for this? How do you make this work? How do you have a big enough impact that you can justify it? So it's, it's a really tough thing. It's, I, I don't, I haven't seen any, you know, clear path forward yet, but be assured, you know, we'll be continuing to work on it, and we're open to all ideas.
Greg, I want to just add one thing here. Several years ago, before COVID, I saw the development plan, I don't think it was this one, Tom Eves, out of with Almosa, all there, he had the land, everything, but I said, I was jumped to the end, Tom, where are you going to get the employees? That was before prices for housing went skyrocket. He says, we'll get them from Villa Grove. Says, we still have carpenters and construction people coming from there. I won't tell you my response, but...
I can imagine.
Guardrail question.
Yeah.
Who determines, by statute, in Colorado, at the county level, who determines for county ground fire steps?
The, you mean, who has jurisdiction over an actual fire or who determines what the red flag warnings and all that stuff is?
Fire conditions.
For, this is complicated.
County ground, not, not forests, but county ground.
Sure. We've got the chief here, but I, my, my answer would be it's the fire marshal who is typically the sheriff, right? But they can delegate that authority away if they want to. Is that a...
And then there's something about where the fire districts have...
Yeah, so in the county itself, we rely on the Forest Service, we work with them to develop what the fire danger is throughout the county. We do know, like, in the spring, the, the valley floor is a lot drier than out in the forest, so it's still as low as the best one you ever required, but we rely on that for consistency. And then as far as fire bans, every agency has the ability to do it, so the sheriff can put it on for the county, Forest Service can put it on for forests, BLM can put it on for BLM.
But in the county currently, it's the sheriff. My question is, is that statutory? Who, who determines?
I think it's the fire marshal, right? But that is...
It's fire warden, isn't it?
It's the sheriff.
Sheriff that has the ability.
Yeah.
So the county sheriff and the fire marshal.
Well, they're one in the same.
By statute?
Yes.
Are the same?
No, they don't have to be. The sheriff can delegate the authority to some other person to be the fire marshal, but in most of these situations, they're one in the same.
I think the default is that...
In Colorado, is the county sheriff who may delegate?
He could.
Is that...
But I, I don't know how often that happens. I'm just saying, they can. That's why they have a different name for it. Right? It can be one in the same. I believe so.
I think that's the way it's written, is the sheriff, by definition, unless they delegate it, unless they appoint somebody else.
And I would add, during our tenure, there's been some great strides in terms of what Chair Bertram was talking about, communication among the agencies and really trying to be all on the same page. So when the forest goes, the BLM goes, sheriff goes, we try to keep it unified so it's not confusing for people. And I think some of this enhanced communication has come out of the work we've been doing on wildfire mitigation and just getting everybody around the table, having a lot more of these discussions so that we can have a more unified, you know, presentation to the public. Not just, we can all educate you with all this complexity, but most of fire season is visitor season, and it's really confusing to people. They don't know where the forest is or that kind of thing.
And something that we did, kind of a small thing that general public probably isn't aware of, and you really, wouldn't make a lot of sense if you were keenly aware of it, we added an additional work session about 18 months or two years ago. And the reason that we did was so we could have a dedicated time once a month for all of our land management agencies to come in together and for all of us to talk about these issues like camping in Four Mile, like the roads up around St. Elmo, like all these different issues, so that we're all there in the same room rather than trying to coordinate some special meeting. And those have been really productive. The other thing that we have during this additional work session is dedicated time for our state and federal representatives, usually not the actual person, but a member of their staff to come in and tell us about things that they have going on, about various opportunities, and for us to plead our case with them about broadband, the postal service, fill in, fill in all the blanks. So we've, we're not only taking advantage of the opportunities, we're creating additional opportunities.
Carol, did you have a question?
I'd like you to go back to the very first question, and I wish I had as much...
And I wish I had as much information as we need to answer this question, but I'm going to do my best. We're, I'm part of this age strong and where we can have the assisted living. But during our, the end of our meeting, um, the case managers of the Department of Health and Human Services made a plea that we should start working on the fact that J.B. County pretty quickly is not going to have any case management for any of the waivers or to get into the long-term care facility, which is Columbine. And that was what that question was about. And the state decided to look at county districts and J.B. County, um, apparently did not feel that they were in a position to make a bid to be one of the case management centers. So as a result, a less based subcontract, I believe, that J.B. County will no longer have DHS case management for the DD waiver, which is probably got a different name these days, and the DD waiver. Are you all aware that this is going to be going away?
No, I'm not. I may be aware of what you're talking about, but not in, in those terms. I'll have to do some digging around on that. There's a lot of things happening in the behavioral health world and in the childcare world because there've been two new administrations or offices or departments set up within the state. And so there's some reshuffling going on. So I know there's some things happening with the behavioral health system. And it looks like there's probably going to be two management regions statewide, one for the population centers. We know where those are, and then another for the whole rest of the state. That's very controversial within this whole health and human services arena. But I'm not sure if that's, is, is the impression you're getting is that people are just leaving the job or? Oh, yeah, you there and now we got it, there we got it expert. Yeah. Thank you. You threw me a lifeline.
So I'm the supervisor for that program. And that was my case manager that was speaking on that. I don't know who I direct this to, but, um, so the state had, has reorganized, it's called the catchment area and/or region. And right now, J.B. County serves J.B. and Lake County and it's through DHS. And it's a long-term care Medicaid program. And we do serve, we do not serve the DD waiver that is handled through Star Point in Fremont County, but they have no services. So those children, so they, we're, we're talking 18 years and older that are either developmentally disabled or us who are getting older and maybe cannot, um, care for ourselves, cook a meal, homemaker services, personal care, so that you can age in your home. And like you were saying, not leave the county. We are losing the ability to case manage that. The RFP came out, J.B. County, um, there's been some change in, um.
Leadership.
Higher ups. Yeah, our, our director Dave passed away. We had a plan that we would not bid on the RFP and that we would subcontract whoever won that RFP. And that's a request or proposal that is to run the program in J.B. County and Lake County. Um, that, that was too big of an area because it was Lake County, J.B. County, Fremont and Custer, which is what, uh, agency area aging also manages those counties. So anyhow, it was going to be too big. There's problems down in Fremont County was hiring anyone and it was, they just said we shouldn't do that. So now I'm hearing that we cannot manage, we cannot subcontract that it's county. That question was from me. That's county policy that we can't subcontract for whatever agency wins that RFP. So if that happens, the case management for J.B. and Lake County will go to another county, possibly Denver, Fremont or El Paso. And then, so if you're here and you need to talk to your case manager, you would go to a call center. Uh, I can't even get through to them. So the case management would just, we have our community partners. The case management would really be lacking for people who are elderly, blind or disabled. So that, that's where all that came from. So I would love to have another meeting about that, maybe outside of this. Cause it is really important. We have 130 clients that we serve right now. This is not county funded, it's state funded. And, um, we also run the adult protective services. So those case managers, then that would go, it was under child welfare and, um, adults and children are very different. So, uh, it did come to us, which we deal with elderly, blind, disabled, brain injuries and mental health.
And so ultimately that has an effect on service delivery and the quality of care that they receive.
We, we've been running this program through DHS for eight years, almost nine years. Uh, I've been there eight years and, um, our community partners, our hospitals, our nursing facilities, just our, our general, the people we serve will be greatly affected if this goes to another agency. So right now we're just looking, the RFP already closed. So somebody will be awarded our catchment area. But, um, our hope is we could subcontract to that agency. So their quality of case management could remain stable for J.B. County.
In J.B. County.
Are they?
In J.B. County.
In J.B. and Lake County.
So I think the question yesterday was how can we as citizens, um, try to get some impact on the people who are going to make this decision about the subcontract? Is that in the commissioner's purview at all?
I don't know Denise, what do you, we, would we need to talk to, uh, what are, what are they now? CDHS or CDHE or?
So it's hip pubs.
Hip pub, okay.
Um, Dave and I met with them, uh, via Zoom. They would not budge on the catchment area. I'm holding up. So a little history on this is nobody would take our county and Lake County. We're geographically isolated. The travel, um, right now we have, they pleaded and we have just a great relationship for a care provider that is in, uh, Glenwood Springs that manages Lake County for us. Otherwise, Lake County would have nothing. And, um, J.B. County has two caregiver agencies. One comes from Plutlow and they travel up here to provide that service when they can't get anyone to work here. Federal government pays $15 an hour while my parent pays $21.50. I shouldn't say federal government, but long-term care Medicaid. So there's a lot of issues, but with our relationship, we're dedicated, we're trustworthy that these agencies will, they will stuck by our side to provide these services. So it is a county commissioner decision whether, uh, I'm guessing whether, um, we are allowed to subcontract. I've been told by the new director that we cannot subcontract. But I guess for policy and, and if we just need to talk about it.
You just need to have a meeting with the county.
You and I'll talk about it and then I'll get with, uh, Lake and we'll work out, we'll work out something to talk with. Yeah.
Thanks Denise for all that.
But it will help to have them behind it too, ever who their commissioner is that works this. So we'll.
And right now we're really need the groundwork because we don't even know who is going to be awarded the RFP. We just have a pretty good idea since they abandoned J.B. County eight years ago that it will do again. So, and I shouldn't use the word abandoned, but not if the quality of care that should be afforded to us.
Thank you.
I'm hoping for discussion and comments later. I'm on business time.
Well, thanks Denise, we'll, we'll talk after.
I have a question in the back here.
Yes. How do J.B. citizens, um, benefit from the eviction of the district attorney's office? And have you provided them an alternative office space?
That is a question that I'm not sure we should really dive into because it is a pending legal matter. I will say, I feel we're on very solid ground, both in terms of the process and the fairness and also from what the law says. And, um, and that this is not driven by, uh, you know, any conflict or anything like that. It's purely about space. I mentioned the building that we were going to build for four million that went to 16 million. That was going to allow for a lot of expansion and better utilization of space and, and putting people where they needed to be. We were not able to do that. We're, we're redesigning our basement, which is a pretty dark place.
The catacombs.
We're, we're looking in every corner. As Beth knows, we just made an office out of some, it's a small space for her. We had to make a new office. And so this is very much a facilities driven issue, but I really, we can't really get into the detail of it and what's going on, uh, with this discussion about eviction and that kind of thing.
Okay. Last question, I know we've probably gone over, but, uh, can you guys stay around for 10 minutes or so or not?
Yeah.
That's what you're paying me for.
I gotta ride with him, so.
Okay. All right, Heather, and then if you guys want to have a little more pizza, whatever, um, ask some more questions. No personal land use questions are allowed to the commissioners.
So you opened the can of worms about 30 minutes ago and I'm going to take the lid off. Let's talk about affordable housing and where do we stand in one moment? And just to clarify, when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about workforce housing. I foresee already as head of the chamber and, you know, being in strong communication with our businesses up here, I'm guessing it's the same in Salida, I don't know, but, um, yikes. Uh, with the take two being shut down, um, you know, that was a big help to some of our restaurants. That's, uh, and others, but I'm talking about seasonal. So as we're coming into crazy season, um, where does it? I know nothing's going to happen to alleviate the problems for this season in particular, but where do we stand on the whole thing? The, uh, money was approved, uh, on the vote of us, from us to, for the CCDB lodging tax 60%. And then, um, that was, has now gone to J.B. Housing Authority, correct? Or a good chunk of it.
An apportionment of it, yeah.
A portion. So where do we stand? What's the plan? Is there a, a, a plan right now that we could see light at the end of any of the tunnels on that? Or is it just like we're?
No. No, no, there's no light at the end of the tunnel yet. There's probably a pretty big bend or two in the tunnel.
But there's no traffic.
Yeah.
Isn't there legislation?
Well, what, here, let's, let's, as, as you know, Becky Gray, who was our founding, uh, housing director and the first director of the housing authority is leaving. And so we're in the process of trying to find a replacement for her, which she is leaving some very big shoes to fill. But, uh, I think we've all been parts of organizations. So we know that there are people who are very good at starting organizations up and getting them running. And then there are people who are hopeless at starting an organization, but they're very good at administering one once they come into it. Uh, I think that's probably the kind of candidate we're looking for to replace Becky. We don't necessarily want Becky 2.0. We want somebody who can, who will come in and take advantage of the groundwork that she's laid and capitalize on it and build upon it. So that's, that's one thing there. Uh, the housing trust, which is another organization we shouldn't forget. And we've got one of our newer staff members of the housing trust here tonight has been doing some really good work to help. But the problem is just the volume of housing units that need to be generated just to stay where we are right now, let alone catch up with the desperate need that we have. So it's something that we have to try to take advantage of every opportunity that we do have. If it's, uh, you know, things like helping make this an attractive business location for fading west and for them to do things and for people to, uh, take advantage of the opportunities that fading west presents here. If it's a closer collaboration with the municipalities, like PT was pointing out. You know, people used to say, well, just go out in the middle of Maxwell Park and build a huge block of apartments out there. Well, now you've just transformed one problem into a bigger problem because you don't have the infrastructure out there. You've got water, you've got transportation, you've got all the utility support that you have to have. And people who need to live in that type of housing are probably going to be somewhat mobility challenged. They're probably going to have a car that breaks down a lot. They're not really good at ride sharing for whatever reason, because their schedules vary and what have you. So it's a huge monumental task. It kind of points out the phenomenon called community readiness for, and then fill in the blank. And these are things like 20 years ago, transfer development rights. That wasn't even, uh, really on the table to be discussed. It might get tossed out every now and then, but it was quickly tossed out. Now it's a serious part of the discussion. So I wish there was something, but it's like, you know, there's so many different parts of the answer, like for homeless people or people who are unhoused. These little palletized pop-up houses that they can find a safe haven in at night. That isn't a long-term housing solution. It isn't going to build generational wealth, but it's something that might keep them from freezing to death at night. That's a part of the answer. A place that people can get into and rent and have a stable place where their kids can study at night and have broadband access rather than trying to study in a car in a McDonald's parking lot to help build a good, solid family background and get on the path to generational wealth. You know, that's an important part of it. And ownership opportunities, those are all important parts of it. I wish I had all the answers. God knows I wish I had the answers. I've prayed about it, I've thought about it, I've lost sleep over it. And, you know, it just takes all of us being creative and all of us be, being willing to do our part, whatever our part is. If our part is allowing it next door to us without fighting it, that's our part. If our part is helping us, uh, build something, that's our part. It's like that first part of High Plains Drifter, everybody's got to give something or it ain't going to be a community.
Thank you all. It was great. If you have other questions, come up and ask. Thank you so much.